I might see.
Catter?
Yep.
Okay, it's five o'clock. Wow.
Yeah.
That really resonates, doesn't it, with these speakers? So it's five o'clock and we're going to bring the work session to order and we're going to turn it over to Chelsea. Just a slight change, we're, the order is going to be one, three, two, four.
Okay, I wanted to start tonight on the storm water management utility and some pump collector project discussion. So in your packet, it is a little bit out of order. You have a proposed new storm water management utility ordinance. Then you have a comparison with storm water fee, and then you have the current ordinance that was put in place back in 2021. So sorry for the confusion there, but the first one is a proposed ordinance. We're going to talk about that a little bit tonight, and that is a draft, so if the council wants to make changes to that. So we are needing to have this conversation tonight because of a project the city is doing, which is the sump pump collector project. So just to give you a little bit of history on how we got to needing to do that project is we have a neighborhood in town that has significant stormwater discharge. And if you have ever owned a home and your water is trying to come into your house, your foundation, you will essentially do anything you can to try to divert that stormwater away from your house, which we have this up in a neighborhood and this covers a number of streets which are located on Roosevelt, Sunset Drive, Lindale Drive, and Oakland Drive. So when these properties discharge into, onto the city streets, it causes the city quite a few issues during the winter when it freezes and it can be a mess any time of the year, but it's specifically challenging during the winter time. So this project is identified in the city's capital improvement plan. It is identified to occur or be constructed in fiscal year 2025. It is also in the city's budget and the council has approved an engineering services agreement with Snyder Associates. The project will consist of constructing almost 5,000 feet of sump pump collector lines, cleanouts, and connections to storm structures. So the estimate for the project is right at $400,000, and this is just for the city portion of the project. This does not include the homeowners that are tying in their sump pump to the line or to the main, we'll call it. City Attorney, City Engineer and I had a phone call earlier this summer to kind of talk about how we would strategize and get the homeowners to tie into the line once it's constructed. City Attorney did advise us that we shouldn't use public funds for private tie-in. There will be a little asterisk here.
I think it's what she's working on, but we can't see the presentation.
Oh, okay. Hi, well, I can see them here, just on me.
The reception isn't as good from the back of the TVs.
Okay. We can send this out, too. It's a quick read. Okay, so City Attorney's advised us we shouldn't use public funds on private tie-ins. Just a little asterisk, there would be funds available to people that qualify for funds. There is the possibility that people could apply to the Metro Home Improvement Program if they qualify and they could be reimbursed for up to a certain amount of the project. There is also the opportunity that the city could use some of their LMI funds to help the private side tie-in.
Got it. Jenny?
And then we've, we've been brainstorming a little bit and we've talked to some other cities that have done some similar projects to the sump pump collector project. You know, we could use economy of scale and get one, get competitive pricing for contractors that could do a large amount of the connections and then we could offer that pricing to that to the residents. Okay, so here is what I'm looking for from the council. We need to make a couple of decisions. First thing that I would propose the council consider is updating the storm water management ordinance. Right now, if you look at the current ordinance that was passed back in 2021, it is really lacking and there's actually no real language on the discharging into the public street. So if we're going to do this fairly expensive project to address an issue that we're having, it's not working, Jason. We need to put some teeth in our, into our ordinance so that people cannot continue to discharge into the public street. So that is really what is drawing the need to update this ordinance. We should try to get this addressed before the project is constructed, which Travis, do you have a timeline of when we would start the extension of this project?
We would aim for next spring.
Okay. So that's item number one, is we really need to update our storm water management ordinance. So what is prepared in front of you tonight is a draft for updating the ordinance that was passed back in 2021. The second thing that the council will need to do or consider is help to make a decision on how to require property owners to tie into the storm sewer. So the city is going to do the public project. They're going to bring the storm sewer line near the vicinity of the home and then the homeowner have to tie into that line. Our recommendation based off of what we've got feedback from, from other cities was that we give people 90 days to tie in and after 90 days, the city can do the project and specialist assess. So that's what's written into the ordinance right now. We can certainly talk about other methods and we, we sent some requests out to a couple of other cities and that seemed to be the best way. And then the other piece with the storm water management utility is Hope City adopted that utility and a fee back in 2021. We've not updated that fee since 2021. If you're going to update the ordinance, we should just have a conversation about also updating the fee. Our fee is relatively low comparatively. Catter? It's not working either, is it? I don't know what's going on.
I can hear you when you're moving it around in your hand. Truck, go ahead and try it. Try the other one now, something.
Okay, I'm going to keep going. Can you guys hear me? I'm kind of sorry. So in reviewing or updating that ordinance, I would recommend the council consider changing that fee. You know, we do, we on an annual basis review our water and sanitary sewer fees to make sure that we're aligning with the needs of the city. So I think that adjusting that fee now would be a good time to do that. So I would open it up for any questions or conversation on this topic.
Have we talked to those, how many homes are we talking about on the president's roads?
The vision, the ones that we visibly see that are openly discharging into the right of way probably are somewhere between 10 and 15. That's not to say that there's not a sump line behind a privacy fence that we can't see that they would be, I, long-term, I think it's probably a benefit to them to have it there, but it's just a matter of, what, from what we've walked it, it's 10 to 15 are either discharging across the sidewalk or directly.
Yeah, I, are we talking about making all of these houses, not just the 10 to 15 tie-in in that timeframe?
It's a good question. We, we give them the ability to tie in if they would like to tie in, but I guess if they're not discharging into a public street, we...
The, the point of the sump pump collector project is to give them somewhere to discharge and in, in our view, one of the benefits is, is that they're not going to be circulating water. Cause there, I will say there are a couple of sump pump collectors or sump pump lines that aren't far enough away from the house, so I'm guessing that they're just pumping the same water over and over.
That's what I was doing. I, when I moved to town, it was on Roosevelt and so I would be all for this, but I think anytime that we're talking about changing an ordinance for the whole town and it disproportionately affects a couple dozen houses and doesn't affect at all any of the rest of the homes that are already tied into the storm sewer, we need to get feedback from them before we move ahead on all of this. Cause I, I don't want, I, I get our point and the why it's scheduled, why it is, but again, us doing this to a non-receptive group, which I don't feel is very likely, doesn't seem like a real great spend. So I, I think having conversations with them about what we're doing and maybe it's just a mailer or not some, you know, over, or a public meeting or whatever, I don't know. I don't, we don't have to go crazy with it, but I, I think we need to get some feedback on how receptive and to Travis's point, identify some of the key people and target them and, and then if it's, just see where that leaves us. But it would be my answer. I'm also not excited about upping the charge, but we can talk about that later.
So what's the average cost to homeowner to tie in?
We haven't gotten that far yet.
Well, so we've done several, Snyder Associates has done several projects in other communities, through the systems of those communities, and the numbers of the community it came up with as far as like whether it's a reimbursement program or fee, whatever it is, range anywhere from, I've seen that as low as 800 all the way up right in the 1500 to 2000 range. And typically what that's constituted, cause the one example that I've heard of is the city of Huxley on one of theirs did a incentive re, rebate program more or less. So if you connect with an X amount a day, the city gave you X amount of dollars and they based their number, I think it was 800 at that time on freedom quotes from local plumbers. And they, they more or less created a standard or average home to connect. So X amount of connect for a pipe to connect to the connection at a certain depth.
And this does involve crunching pipe below the frost line to tie in rather than running their current hose to a tie-in point in their front yard.
But we're not allowed to do incentives, like your example. Is that correct?
Our attorney has, yeah, advised us that we shouldn't use public dollars for a private tie-in.
So what other option is there if it's not public dollars?
There are some funds available to people that qualify.
For LMI?
Yep, there is the Metro Home Improvement Program. That is a metro-wide program. There's several different cities or entities involved in that that allow participants to make improvements to their home. Qualify, yes, you could participate that and that is a, an eligible project for some, um, talk again.
So is that what you're saying Huxley did is use private or public funds for a private connection?
I should have, I should have, or I should have caveated that. That was, so there, the thought may have changed since then.
Were, were you around in the nineties?
Yeah, I, I just think we got to gauge interest from, if, if there's, you know, let's double the number, 50 people impacted by this. I think before we move ahead with anything, we need to make sure that they're committed. I, I, again, putting my, I was in that position. I, I know how annoying it is when you're trying to pump water and one day it's frozen and you're, you've got a sump line outside, so I'd be all for it, but I don't want to impose my perspective on those people.
So council's driving this. It isn't people coming to city hall saying they want something done.
We've received complaints over the years about the mess that it makes in the public street.
Yeah, it, it ices up Oakland pretty badly.
Yeah, I know Lindale.
But Oakland's not where we're talking though, right? We're talking about Roosevelt, Adams, and Lincoln.
It is Oakland.
Oakland's Oakland.
Was that on one of the earlier slides?
Yes.
Okay, can you go back? I don't think that was up when we were...
There you go. Roosevelt, Sunset, Lindale, and Oakland Drive.
Okay, I, I get that the council has driven it to this point and I also understand there is an incentive because of the issues that it causes, but again, if, if, if the public isn't on board with this, the ones that we need, there's no benefit to what we're doing. If we, we can spend the $400,000 and if only a couple of people connect, we're in the same position and we're out $400,000. That's...
But one of the big problems here is that the water that's being discharged into the street is also doing physical damage to the street itself. It's damaging our public infrastructure. We need them to stop discharging into the street, particularly in the winter.
It's going to be a long time before that adds up to $400,000.
I think you'd be surprised if we've got to redo all of...
How many of those roads, I mean, they've been doing this for 30 years, longer probably. How old is Sunset? Have we fixed anything on that road?
I do not know.
The last four three-year repair projects have ended at these two locations and on one of those streets, at least two locations.
Okay.
So I, I do think that before we do the construction project, we, we do need to address some of the things in the ordinance. Those are the two things the council can make a decision on or looking for feedback on. It's one of those things where you've got the city trying to address the problem, but you also do need private property owners' cooperation to address it, but we're looking for feedback on how you like that. Like I said, with the ordinance, we give them 90 days and if they don't tie in, we can do a special assess.
I think the sooner we let them know that this is going to happen, and I think this does need to happen, the better. Giving them a timeframe of, we're doing this construction project in the spring to fix the, the discharge issues in front of your house. We're going to need you to tie in after we get this construction done. You're going to have this timeframe. I, I, we just need to communicate to them and the sooner the better.
Okay, we can do that. We can send out a letter that's on, notify people.
So these, you said 15-ish homes. So we, we're targeting specifically 15 homes that we've seen dumping this water causing issues. Essentially, the way we're crafting this ordinance, we're going to force these people to do this no matter what.
If we upgrade the ordinance?
If we upgrade the ordinance, we're going to force them. So they have no, either they're going to pay outright or, what'd you say?
Assessment for it.
Special assessment.
We'll do the work and, and special assess them. Yep.
And the special assessment would be over how many years?
We could, that, we'll both get that.
Would it be a, a lot of years? Normally there are...
Maybe five or 10 years.
So is this, again, I'm gonna, I have three more or two more months to use my freshman card, right? Is this normal kind of SOP that we do? I mean, it, it's less than a year out to tell people that they have to come up with 800 to 1500 dollars or we're gonna force you to do it.
If it was 800 dollars in the nineties, that's probably at least two grand now. Is that what you said?
Yeah.
Oh, so the prices were back in the nineties, too. Okay. Next time, please give us information that's relevant to today. Thank you.
Well, that, that's the best information we have. These don't come around very often because most, most communities have had, well, I'm not...
So it's probably three times that.
Sump pump collector, or sump pump, or sump pump collector lines are installed with all of your modern streets. So that's part of the thing is it's, it's the time period where these neighborhoods are constructed. They just don't have availability of storm sewer.
So if those funds are not available, the, the programs we talked about, Chelsea, you said, you had mentioned LMI funds. How does that work?
So the city does have low to moderate income funds that we set aside. We give a residential tax money. So a lot of LMI money, the council could start some sort of special program just for this project where if you qualify or you meet some certain qualifications, you could have...
About how many houses are we running in front of with this new line? How many?
That's probably somewhere between 100 and 150.
So you're going, obviously Oakland's the smallest and then Lindale, Sunset, Roosevelt, you're, you're running the entire length of those streets?
The intent would be, yes, that we would, as part of this project, we would put a line on one side of the street and then stump services for every home because those neighbors are completely built out. We know exactly what we're aiming for. And then the idea would be is if we have, if they have a sump discharge that is visible or it's clear and obvious where it comes out, we would place that service in a manner that would make sense at home. So if, if the home has a discharge on the south side of the home, we're not going to put the service clear on the north side of the home. Or if we, if we can see it from the south side of the home, we're not going to center it on the
What I was getting at is kind of like how we used LMI for the water tower. Could be using LMI for hookups for everyone out there, assuming that this is for the greater good of the community to use LMI funds. So we don't have to worry about these hookups. We just assume that there's a cost for construction, there's a cost for hookup and that hookup gets paid through using LMI for every person out there. Just be done with it. Make them all do it. And we'd do it for and under the whole project. Is that a possibility?
Yeah, maybe.
I would go that route. And that's a benefit, which is the intent of LMI.
We can look into that. I, ordinance and just free, other city ordinances, we do need to put something in the, not discourages, but it doesn't allow discharging on the public street. I think that's a pretty common requirement we are missing in our ordinance. So even if something, I don't know that we could even draft up a nuisance letter to send out because that's how favorable the ordinance is. And it, I, it can be considered a public nuisance for sure, so especially if it's in the public halls.
Well, there, there's other areas in town where there, there are sump lines running across people's front yards on the sidewalks and...
Yes.
You know, it's slimy in the summer, summer months and it's frozen in the winter months. So if you're a pedestrian, it poses a risk. It's not just a risk to the city, but it's a risk to the, that homeowner, too.
I agree with that. I think the, the road piece is really loud. Overstated, but I, wow. I lost my train of thought now.
Is that all it takes?
Yeah, apparently. Um, I, I just, I think we got to talk to these people because I'm, I'm hesitant to force their hand because even if we say you can't disarge into the, the road, then they're just gonna do the same thing that they're doing a foot off the sidewalk. And is it short-sighted because they're recycling the water? Yes, but it, the more we try to force an issue, the less receptive people are going to be. So if we can educate them on what we're doing, why, and why it's in their interests, I think people will get on board. We just need to, we're not talking about that many people. We just need to communicate to them.
We send out letters to the, let's just say, to people that are probably in violation. Put an updated ordinance in front of the council to press discharge.
I agree with you there because it's not just this, not just these streets. It's a lot of streets in town.
Yes. Do a lot of other communities have a similar ordinance? Do we know that?
Yes. Yeah, I think when, privately, me and Ryan, we had a team screening, tries that we could put our hands together for discouragement. So, yep, okay, that would be helpful. You like the proposed ordinance that we drafted up?
What'd we say about, would you text me back about the fee? Or we talked about it early? Yeah.
Tapping fee.
Yep.
The permit fee would be the plumbing permit. We'd have the plumbing permit to tie in. Tapping fee would be just the things we do for a water and a sewer tapping fee when someone texts in, you know, tapping fee. Just talking with Jenny, I would want to have a conversation with Public Works. I don't think we would need to charge a tapping fee for this, for the sump pump collector. So we could, we can leave it in there because it references a fee being set by ordinance and then if the council ever wants to set a fee by ordinance, you could do that, but right now there would be no fee associated with that.
We charge a tapping fee for water and sewer because it has to be inspected. Since I don't know how these sump lines work after the fact, I don't have those answers yet, Jeff. But working with Snyder and Public Works, we can figure out if there's going to be any expense associated with it. We wouldn't just charge a fee to charge a fee. And then if it turns out there's expense for staff time or whatnot, then we can present that to you guys.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's find the ordinance.
All right.
I will plan to put that on the next council agenda. We will draft letters off and get them sent out and we'll see if we can...
So if we put the ordinance on the next agenda, is that going to make these people automatically when they start discharging water out, non-compliant?
After the ordinance is passed, which will take two months, it will be a separate reading instead of all separate activated ordinance, we create a hearing.
And what are their options until this project comes through then?
I mean, you can certainly discharge in your yard. I lived on a property where I had, you know, I could very easily discharge my sump pump hose out on the street or I could put it in my backyard. People sometimes don't want standing water in their backyard, though. I, I understand that, but that's probably the better option between the two.
Okay.
So, yeah, so if we, if we are to move forward with the ordinance, we have it on iced with third reading at the end of November going to effect in December.
It's fine. When we do send out those letters, is there a chance we could get some sort of estimate to these people what it's going to actually cost them to tie in?
We can do that. We can work on getting some estimate.
Okay, great. So we're going to go to item three, which is the update and discussion on the municipal regional park project. If we're going to keep to our allotted time, we have 15 minutes for these two things, so we'll want to keep that in mind. So...
I just wanted to give the council an update on the postcard that is going to go out later this week or beginning next week. We all authorized this to be sent out last month. We, we worked with some of the user groups in town on the language on the postcard and this is where we landed. There is a QR on the postcard that gives you additional information. We will continue to update that and add information in the coming weeks, but this is what's going to hit mailboxes in the next few days. So we just wanted to give you all an update in case you have a question.
So is this a blown-up version of the postcard or is this going to be folded over or something?
It will be a postcard and it'll be front and back. It's printed on one page or you just see.
Okay. Any questions, anybody? We'll move on.
I guess the only other thing I do want to add is I did coordinate and communicate with the Iowa Ethics Campaign Board. They reviewed the postcard and gave their stamp of approval. They saw nothing there that was in violation. So if somebody asks you that, that disclaimer will be at the bottom. See, it's missing here.
Okay.
Okay.
Moving on.
Next topic. I don't have, I do not have a lot prepared tonight for... Um, I don't have, I do not have a lot prepared tonight for discussion of Old City Hall. But I wanted to kind of bring to your attention a couple of things. Um, the first item that I just wanted to talk about is, I think we have noticed, you know, since we've, um, moved into the new building, there are some improvements that probably need to be made to the Old City Hall. So we are still working to get some cost to paint. Fire escape. We're estimating that those two items could cost about fifty to sixty thousand dollars. Still don't have estimates, but painting would be, would involve scraping and repainting the entire building. So I wanted to bring that to the council's attention before we get into the discussion. And then, um, second, just a reminder, we just finalized our next five-year CIP, and you all prioritized some money for demolition costs. You weren't specific in what additions you would demolish, but we did get quotes to demolish both north and the south end of the building, and we included that in the CIP. Um, kind of put asterisks there that, you know, the council can make that. That's not for two years from now that that money is allocated in the capital plan. So I will leave it at that. I know that some of you have brought some thoughts and ideas, so go ahead and open up.
Yeah, so I, I think tomorrow, I'd like to put it out for bid, um, on if we demolitioned everything that's not a part of the schoolhouse historical society structure, what there are commercial options for that chunk of land, alternately from groups like the Historical Society and, and ma- any other groups, what they would like to use with it. I, I don't wanna spend any money painting or doing any work until we have a plan, uh, for what it's gonna be. I mean, painting something and then taking it down two years later doesn't seem like a real solid option. I, 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 I don't wanna have it look, I don't wanna have it be an eyesore, uh, either, but, um, I, I just don't know that we can make a determination for what we wanna use it if we don't know what options are all, um, uh, sort of in our quiver, so to speak, and, and getting feedback for what the, I mean, I, maybe I'm more optimistic than I should be, but I reference what the Creamery was ten, fifteen years ago and what it is now. And it would have been a leap to have said that this old building that's odd, misshapen, and not real structured well could have been what it is. And so I'm, I'm hopeful that despite the fact that it's sort of a U-shaped, uh, structure, um, and there are uses for a lot of different things already that we need to be cognizant of if we change, that, you know, just get some feedback for what it can be. It is still on the square, it is still right on a, a busy section, um, and with our other improvements around the square, I think could be viable to the right developer. Um, but again, getting feedback from the Historical Society on what they could do with it is relevant too, and then any other groups that have an interest in, in, in making something there, so.
Clarifying, you want the city to still pay the demolition cost, or you're expecting someone else to pay those?
I, I guess it depends on how much it is, but, um, I think that's, starting with that in mind, uh, you know, seeing what they could do with a blank slate, and then assuming the demolition isn't overly cost prohibitive.
So, but you're not talking about the building that's on the register part of it, or you're talking about the si- the sides?
I'm, I'm talking about everything from the Masonic building to the back of the police station and over to Van Dorn excluding the schoolhouse, whatever's on the registry.
Okay, which is the main middle building. Okay, cuz we wouldn't be able to do anything with the, the build, the parts that's on the registry.
I think we can, but we shouldn't. But your, your point, either way, uh, like, I, I don't wanna.
Split her.
Yeah, so my, so, um, we, we would have to make sure that the, um, lean-to wasn't on the registry also.
It wouldn't be.
You're sure of that?
You can take that down and bring it back, bring the schoolhouse back to its original integrity without one or six issues.
Now, I know that there's a space between the lean-to and the original building.
Right.
I was told that.
And you can see inside, you can see the original.
Do you wanna put out a proposal for where the police park though?
I do.
For what?
But where will, where will they put their vehicles then?
Behind, where, where the, behind the Masonic Lodge now.
I just, I think, and I'll let you know, but I think the concern is when they break someone in, um, holding space.
I understand.
There's just no doorway.
But we will, we will still have the alleyway from Van Dorn, not the alleyway, but like the walkway from Van Dorn over to that same door that they use.
And the parking spots that are.
Yes, from, from the current parking spots where they bring people in, they'll still be able to access that door.
They don't care.
They would just have to bring them in from, from Van Dorn, essentially. You don't need to go into the front door.
And, and I'm not saying, I, I, I just wanna include it for the initial discussions. If there's a way for whoever comes back with an idea, and again, maybe nobody comes back with a viable idea at all, but including that, um, in the discussion, I think is where you start. And then I wanna hear from Chief again on, on their needs and weigh the alternates. We go from there, if there's a way for somebody to do it and leave that spot.
So right now, we're still two years out on this from what we've got in our CIP. So putting out a bid now, or a, or a quest for proposals now to see what somebody might wanna do with it, that, that sounds like a reasonable idea. Um, as far as the things that need to be addressed now, I think the, the painting probably should wait until we either do demo the structures as part of our CIP, or we've got a proposal that somebody wants to do the demo and build something new, and then address the painting then. Um, it sounds like the fire escape should probably be addressed sooner than that, though.
So what do we know about the fire escape? I mean, it, is it, is it needing?
I hate doing this and put Randy on the spot, because he's here for my tiny foot. Randy, do you wanna give just a brief? Thank you.
The, uh, fire escape, what we're gonna do is replace it with some steps over there. Look at that structure as a whole, you can go up and actually shake it. I don't think it can legally be attached to the Historical Society, because it's kind of pre-standing, or it's, that's part of the rule. But it's, it's just some pre-standing structure that, that, the whole structure needs replaced. It, it is a safety hazard.
And those are the wood stairs on the south side of the building, right?
So if the council wanted to wait on the painting until they were, um, doing work in twenty twenty-seven, would it be, could you close down the second story so that you didn't have to do the, um, stairwell? Would that be done? Cause that stairwell sounds like pretty, Randy, pretty expensive replacement.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm supposed to be the guy here the next day or two. Yeah, it, it will, it will be cheap.
I, um, we do not have it in this year's budget. That doesn't mean that we can't necessarily do it, but we're gonna have to come up with it. I, um, I think it'd be great to, if, if we can just maybe move it up where the old City Hall letters used to be, because you still can read that. I think it does cause some confusion as we've moved into the new buildings, so that might be one small request I have, is if we can just try to paint over that section and. Something you can't read City Hall anymore.
And that's just where we took the letters off and it's bleached, right?
Yep.
Would we need to contract that out, or is that something we can do at House?
That's siding.
Yeah.
We could probably do, do that now.
Okay.
We'd have a conversation at least.
Kind of look, we're just trying to paint it.
So are you wanting me to come up with that with an RFP?
I, I would prefer that we sit down and have a brainstorming session amongst this group and throw everything out there and start prioritizing. And while we're doing that, I think we also need to get someone in there. If we've got problems with the, the stairs on the outside, what other issues are we gonna potentially be digging into? So we can understand what we need to fix, in addition to potentially tearing down one or two lean-tos. I think that would be advantageous for us to understand, and then how we pay for those. And then while all that's kinda in the play, I think we can develop an RFP based on what we want after we've prioritized what we want, instead of, we don't know what we want, so let's hear some ideas, and then, you know, we, we, it's kind of the dog chasing the tail at that point.
So what is the discussion about what we want before we ask?
I think, I think we just need collectively understand what do we want the, the schoolhouse to be? What do we want the spaces around it to be? Like you were talking about, potentially having some new real estate in there. And coming up with some ideas, that way when we put an RFP out, we're not just saying, come tell us what you wanna do, because we don't know what we wanna do. Let's, let's at least give them some, some bumpers to work within. And then, at the same time, we can understand the costs associated with some of the repairs in the short term, and how they may be impacting it long-term if we start tearing into the building. Cause we could be, you know, throwing good money out and bad.
I, I agree with that statement.
I'm on board. I think we overall need to do an assessment of the building itself and see what we're looking at as far as long-term repairs, long-term maintenance.
So I'm, I need to get a structural. I'll, to come to you.
Yep.
We can start. I have an ageist leak. Good morning. Are you wanting to then have a brainstorming session? Have that information? I could like. RFP to bring to the, the brainstorming session? We can just have all thoughts and ideas on the table then?
I, I'm fine. I, I still am not sure what bumpers would we put on, but if we, as long as we do it relatively quickly, it's, it's, a couple of weeks isn't fine.
It, just that, like, like as an example, you know, we had talked about the, the city, the, the old, the old council chambers. Could that be, uh, uh, another, a classroom or, you know, some sort of space like that instead of tearing it down? Is there, is there good use for that? I think we, we all agree the north lean-to is, needs to go away. There's not a whole lot of good in that part of the building. But, you know, is there something we could do in the, the old garage?
Yeah, yeah.
Again, it's, just to throw the ideas out, if we all go, nah, let's, let's tear it down and just make it back.
We're definitely gonna have to direct our feedback from these developers to spur that, so I'm fine.
But then that could be our bumpers then, right?
Yeah, yeah, no, that's.
Cause we, I mean, we're talking about doing this, we just haven't really formulated the plan to do it.
So there's just one question about that. I, I get, get the feeling that we wanna go that direction to investigate what we're facing. How do we bring everybody together for that?
That is a good question. We'll figure it out. I don't know when we're going to have time to have like a council work session. We'll figure something out. I know that we already have something planned for the next work session. Um, so I don't know if we could look at a special day, we'll just take a look.
So my immediate concern, though, is the fire escape. How, I mean, is it as bad as you say it is, Randy? I mean.
So, so if we needed to evacuate people out of the second floor, there would be a worry about people trying to traverse down it.
I think if you got a rush of people coming out of there all at once, definitely it would be a problem.
Okay.
We have Rose and Rich from the Historical Society. Can we hear from them, is that?
Hold up, hold, oh, Rose, come on up here.
First of all, I wanted to remind you that you do have, uh, well, it's probably the, uh, eighty-year lease with the Historical Society, that you will maintain that building at your expense, not ours. And fire escape, yes, I have it. So the fire escape is one of the things, and the reason we're asking for it, the painted, that you're spending offering money to businesses that take them next year, twenty twenty-five, spoke city says quintennial, which means Pope City was incorporated, not pound it, but incorporated a hundred and fifty years ago. And we think that being one of the focal points here in town, that it should be looking its best. That's one reason why I requested that painting be done now.
Thank you.
The painting on the schoolhouse or the painting on?
Schoolhouse. I don't care if we paint the lean-tos or not, but, uh, the schoolhouse itself, it's, uh, coming off and it's, uh.
Have you guys looked into grants or anything that can be used for?
I don't know if you can get grants, one year they get grants from, um, Pope County. So we kinda like it to be painted before they release their, they'll release the money to like July.
Well, we're not gonna have any money before then.
And we wanna paint it before July, when we have the celebration and talk, so.
Yeah.
I think it would be worth, um, and I would love to be a part of this conversation, having a conversation with Bravo of Greater Des Moines. I know the Historical Society has gotten some. Um, but I know they have, they have different grant cycles with different opportunities, and so, um, like I said, I'm, I would love to sit down and whether it's this specific need or as we look forward, because we're talking about a lot of different things here. But, um, I know they have representatives, and like I said, I'm happy to line that up and sit down with you.
We just applied for Bravo Grant this year. Last year, we got a whole three hundred dollars from it, and that will be gonna be a little chance.
Is that the only grant you've applied for, though?
This year, yeah.
Okay, I, I have to believe there holds a whole slew of grants available for Historical Society.
You know, I just know.
I would contact Heather, I would contact Heather Gamm with, Gamm with Chipotle.
Nobody tells you where they're at.
Okay, so. I imagine there, there are grants, but the simple fact of the matter is, is that this is our building, and we are responsible for maintaining it, one way or the other.
Okay, so well, we have a path forward anyway, and let's just proceed down that path forward. Thank you, Rose, for your comments.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, um, let's see, that is our last item, so a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign.